Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
Here. Go ahead and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Following our agenda, is there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, citizens to be heard, I have one, Ken Harris.
First off, I'm Kent Harris, City Council Member, resident of city Port Huron. I'm here tonight just to please ask you guys when you consider your retirees, that whatever it is, whether it's some kind of a stipend, but I think our retirees are as valuable to the county as others. And I know there's an article in the paper about giving them a 13th paycheck, and I don't consider that anything that we should be disappointed in. I think they've given a career. I think that some of them live on the basics, the minimum wage and things like that, and some have very little beyond retirement, especially with the state government taking a little stipend out of it themselves. So I guess basically I'm here ahead of the Ways and Means Committee section, but I just honestly would like to appeal to you guys to treat your retirees with a little respect in what you do, but with a little monetary respect, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Is there any other citizens to be heard? Okay. Conceptual initiatives? Nothing? Old business? New business? I have one in there, the Veterans Affairs Board appointment.
I make a motion that Dan Lane be appointed to the Veterans, or send it on to the full board to put Dan Lane on the Veterans Board.
I would second that.
We need a roll call on that, or just...
No, but can I clarify? Are you also switching the position from World War II to Vietnam?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
I would support that change in the...
Okay, if we have moved and supported, to send it on to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Other human service matters? Information only. Item A, January 2014, points of interest Health Department. And Item B, gift of life letter regarding St. Clair County Medical Examiner's Office.
I think a motion we receive and file, 9A and B.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment for this committee.
So moved. Second.
Support.
Move and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order. Clerk, take the roll, please.
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none?
I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard, Nick Straffan from Platte Township, please.
Thanks, Bill. You need an address or anything like that?
I've got it right here.
Okay, you've got it, okay.
Tell us what you want to tell us.
Okay, thank you. County Commissioners, I'm here tonight to encourage the Board to approve licensed driver use of off-road vehicles on township and county roads. In 2011, the state delegated authority to the counties and individual townships to legalize their use. Since then, numerous counties across the state implemented ORVU rules, including the Thumbs, Sand Lake, and Huron Counties. Within St. Clair County, Ira Township implemented their own rules. I understand Sheriff Donnell forwarded draft rules similar to Sand Lake County's ordinance about two years ago to the Commission. Last summer, Commissioner Greatop forwarded, I'm sorry, informed me that the state was revising those rules. And on, let's see, on September, on 25 September 2013, the governor signed those revisions into law as Public Acts Number 118 and 119. The acts themselves just refined the law itself, they did not materially change the law at all. So today in my township, I am told by residents of other townships that ORVs are used in counties and township roads illegally because there is no law that allows it in this county. I would like to use mine, but I want to do it legally here instead of traveling to and from and spending money in other counties driving my off-road vehicle. I believe this is a citizen's right in this county, and it has been elsewhere in Michigan since 2011. Request the Board prepare final rules and approval. If you need help, I'm here to help you write them too. On a separate subject, not affiliated or associated with off-road vehicles, I happen to be the Claims Director of the Michigan Gold Prospectors Association of America. And if anyone in the county would like to learn more about gold prospecting in Michigan, we have a website. The website is michgpaamichigan, or M-I-C-H-G-P-A-A dot com. And we're looking for anybody that's interested in enjoying the outdoor and bringing a shovel with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
We'd be interested in the gold, Nick, I'm sure of that.
Just now.
Nick knows where it all is. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the judiciary and public safety? All right. Hearing none, and normally we don't comment on those things, but I will say publicly that Nick has been very patient, and we probably, maybe even myself, have dropped the ball on the ORV ordinance. We are going to pick it up again and make sure that we get it done pronto, vite. Okay, moving on to updates. Any updates? Conceptual initiatives? Nothing? There is no old business. Under new business, we have two items tonight. Item A is the 2013 Interlocal Agreement Homeland Security Grant Program. This is an award in the amount of $328,327. There should be no match to that.
Make the motion.
Okay. Motion and support to send it on to the full board. Are there any questions?
There's no match on that, right?
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Part B is the 2013 Operation Stone Garden grant money. And again, there is no match to this.
Make the motion.
Support.
Motion and support to send it to the full board. Any questions on the Stone Garden grant? It has gone down year after year after year, from the millions, it's down to...
164,000.
Correct.
Actually, 100, new ones, 159,315.
That is more correct.
Actually, we just had a meeting, Candace Miller was in town. It was kind of interesting because we were talking about the borders and all the stuff. And she had met with the Secretary of, you know, Homeland Security at the time, and basically the comment was, "We've had 40 people get murdered, you know, here in southern border. How many have you had up there?" I mean, that's kind of how the tensions shifted to the southern border, and that's where, hence the funding is going to now. So I think you're going to continue to see less and less.
It is going to go that direction, and it's tough. We're not getting near what we wanted, but, you know, you can get political about it if you want to and say things like, "Well, let's keep it safe before it gets unsafe." But the money goes where?
If I could comment, Mr. Chair. I have heard rumors that, you know, Silver Sticks is having problems because of crossing the border with all the young Canadian hockey players. And it's too bad it is such a hassle for these young hockey players to come over here and participate in what has been traditionally a really fantastic event, all because of border security, you know.
That's not rumor, that's fact. I actually sit on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they have, they'll get pre-screened and try not to do the Port Huron to Sarnia thing back and forth, just does not work for the teams. That's why they've had to move so many of them over to Lapeer to those, and then the hotel rooms, so that even the hoteliers are having a lot of issues regarding it, so.
Sad.
Pretty good. Any other comments before we vote? All right, all in favor of sending that 7B on to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. Other judiciary public safety matters? Anybody? I have one item I want to share with the board members, and I also want to share it with the audience and the general public. The dismemberment body that was found in St. Clair County this past week raised an awful lot of media interest, radio, television, it was national news. And I want to throw some kudos out to a few people. One is the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department. The six detectives that worked on that case and went home and came back and worked on it again without much rest did an excellent job. The normal detective lieutenant that would be on the scene was not on the scene, and so the sheriff stepped up, the undersheriff's out of town, the sheriff stepped up, took command from inside the sheriff's office with the guys out in the field. The guys in the field worked hard, all the detectives, the road patrol people. The road commission showed up so that they could use them to block off roads and use their equipment. The state police crime tech labs scene, people were out on the scene. The FBI people in Quantico were on the job. The St. Clair County Prosecutor's Office was involved in this case. St. Clair County interim chief and Detective Sergeant J. Coho worked very well with the St. Clair County Sheriff. In fact, I called Detective Sergeant Coho, and I asked him how things were going. I didn't ask about the case, but I asked about the cooperation between the two departments. He couldn't have said more good things about the Sheriff's Department here in St. Clair County. It was an awesome report that he gave me. The sheriff gave the same report back the other way. Oakland and Macomb County were very quick to step up and send all of their missing persons report fitting the description that they had. Macomb County, one of those descriptions turned out to be the individual. The Secretary of State's office was involved with picture identification of the mother. All of these things leading to an early culmination in this particular case. Big kudos, and I don't know the person, and I didn't ask who it was, but there was one individual citizen who observed this, gave a very good description of the woman and the vehicle chasing that to the gas station. The woman bought gas. If you ever want to do something like this, guys, don't buy gas before or after the crime. It led to, it led to the breaking of this particular case, and she has since been charged. But my kudos go to the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department and all the other people that I mentioned that supported this case, to break this case in about a 24 to 48 hour period and to wrap this thing up, and to the St. Clair Shore's Police Department for working so well with our guys. So I just, I wanted to say that. I think it's important that you know that your sheriff and his department are on top of things. Anything else? Nothing else, then I'm open for to receive and file.
So moved.
And adjourned.
Support.
Received and filed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sound adjourned.
Move we adjourn?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This time, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Greatop.
He's here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Any addition, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would approve a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Rushing. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental or public works matters? Any updates from commissioners regarding environmental or public works matters? Conceptual initiatives, anything from administration? Any old business? Any new business? Okay, we have the Smith Creek Activity Report. Are there any questions regarding that? I understand that presentations were given the last two evenings out at the landfill. Things went apparently very well. We're moving forward with that issue. I would entertain a motion that the Smith Creek Landfield Activity Report be filed.
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Rushing. Any other environmental or public works matters? Yes?
I do have something. I think you need a vote on that.
Pardon?
You need a vote for it on the motion.
Oh, two. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, motion carried. Now we can go on to other environmental matters. Thank you for the slight oversight there.
I have, I do have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
I received a letter from Wales Township today from the Township Supervisor Larry D. Thompson. I'd like to read it. It's in reference to the St. Clair County Road Commission, drafted to Kirk D. Weston, Director, and it says, "Kudos. The township and many residents are very pleased with the attention the roads in Wales Township have received in 2013 and 14. Judging from the calls and walk-ins, people are impressed at the rapid response to complaints, routine maintenance, and the recent all-out attacks the road commission has made on the snow removal. So a big thanks from Wales Township Director Weston, former quant, and all the operators and staff at St. Clair County Road Commission. Sincerely, Larry Thompson." And I'd like to give that for our...
Excellent. Okay. Information only, the park and recreation financial documents. Any questions or concerns regarding them? If not, I would entertain a motion that the park and rec commissions' financial documents be filed.
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Riley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This time, I would entertain a motion to receive and file packets regarding environmental or public works matters.
So moved.
Or...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor?
Aye.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Okay, we have on item two, additions, deletions, and changes to agenda. I have item A on that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we delete item 2A, which would be actually 7A, the Convention Center Management Agreement.
I would second that, and I would like a explanation from our corporate counsel.
The, I requested deletion of this. The reason is that some commissioners raised questions, posed questions, that I couldn't get answered fast enough for the meeting. They were, and they were all good questions that deserve answers. In addition to that, Bill Kruger, who's our consultant, that's basically passing on the business end of this type of thing, was sent the agreement along with a series of questions that Mr. Kaufman prepared and some that I prepared, and we didn't get his answers basically back to get them to you in time for the meeting. So bottom line is, we thought we'd be ready, and we're not. So we want to do this right, step back, get you what you need, and we'll...
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We should have that information next week. I know we've got a conference call, a few of us, with Mr. Kruger, just to get some of this, some of the questions answered. By no way, shape, or form are we not committed to not moving forward with it. There was just, I think, a couple tweaks that needed to be made in it, and I would hope that we'd be able to get it accomplished by our next full board meeting in two weeks.
And this will not hold up the procedure, the completion of the Convention Center at all, so. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to three, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard?
Do I get to address the order under your next agenda item or your...
Citizens.
Citizens.
And when you get a chance, just fill out the form.
Over a month ago, I addressed the Board requesting a 13th check be issued to our retirees. I think most of you were at that meeting in December. I made a formal request for this, and I'm here this evening requesting the same program or that the 13th check be issued to the retirees. I explained last time why and how long it is since it has occurred. It's been over four years. This would be the fifth. Their funds have been appropriated. They are in the account for that specific reason, $154,000. One of the requirements were that the county called canoe employees receive a compensation increase. During 2013, they received $600 increase. We request that 13 check be provided to the retirees based on a maximum of $600 at the rate of one and a half percent per year. The average retiree that is eligible under the program for this would get $261. That's the average. Mr. Kaufman indicated to you that the funding of the retirement system is not healthy, and the information he provided you is correct. It is about 82 percent funded. I ask that we look forward to where are we today? In other words, what happened during 2013? The information being provided is based on December of 2012. 2013, well, there's 22 more million dollars in that fund than there were, was the previous year, 22 and a half million dollars. When we look at the actuary study, we deal with market, and we deal with actuary assumptions and computations for how many dollars are in the assets. If we go back one year and look at December 2012, where we're at 81 and a half, 82 percent funded, $3.5 million wasn't even considered because of the smoothing system used by the actuary. The market value back then was $3.2 million more than listed in the actuary. That makes the funding ratio even a little better. Jump forward again to the December of 2013, there's $218 million under management by the Retirement Board. That's $22 million more than it was the previous year. Probably closer to a 90 percent funding. When you drop off the poor performance of 2008 under the smoothing method used by the actuary, there's more money there. And again, when you authorize $600 across the board to every county general employee, you did the right thing, and nobody can say different. You looked for funds, they came in. You had found a source for those. There is already a source, $154,000 designated in the retirement plan to pay the 13th check. There's to be $40,000 less if this is issued the way we are requesting. We're only, it's only one and a half percent, and only employees, I'm sorry, retirees that have been retired for more than five years at the end of 2012 are eligible for this. So that brings it down to about 430 some in of the retirees. It's not a lot of money. It'd make a big difference to many people. $200 and some dollars a month for the one time, it's a one-time payment being requested. It doesn't compound, it doesn't occur again next year. Average, probably people just help be able to pay their gas bill that they've incurred this year, or maybe their snowplow bill. But the employees have had a lot of costs passed on to them between healthcare, maybe a few of these are even now paying state income taxes on their retirement that they hadn't been up to the year before. Not a lot of them, I admit, because of the age, but certainly there are some that are paying an income tax at the state level and so forth. The value of their money over six years, seven years has certainly decreased, and we're asking for a very modest one and a half percent for each of the retirees that have been retired more than the five years based on 2012. Thank you. Is there any questions? Want to talk about the smoothing and so forth?
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none. Updates? Do we have any updates? Seeing none, going to conceptual initiatives. Okay, we have none. Old business, we have none. Moving on to new business. Moving on to new business. 7A was removed, deleted, so we'll move on to 7B, the retirees' request for the 13th check.
The board will see in front of them today not only the report and recommendation that was included in the agenda packet responding to the 29 January request from the Retiree Association. You'll also see some additional information that was added to the table. There is a brief half-page summary of what you see attached. Attached to that document is a letter from the County Road Commission requesting that the Board of Commissioners reject the St. Clair County Retirees Association request, and they go into detail as to why. There's also a letter from the St. Clair County Mental Health Authority, much the same requesting that the Board of Commissioners reject the request for the 13th check. They also go into detail as to why. And then you will see the last document there is, this is an excerpt from an email that was received by administration from the county's actuarial advisors. This was requested back in December after the initial request was made by the retirees on, I believe it was the 19th of December. This is a response we received from the actuarial questioning them about the current system, the measures that we use, as well as whether or not they feel in their estimate and their understanding of the current system and how it's funded, whether or not it would be a good idea to issue that check at this particular time. And you'll see that they are recommending that now is not a good time to issue a 13th check. In addition to not meeting the requirements that have been set and understood, that the system right now is not funded as strongly as they would like to see it funded before additional checks like this are issued. So, that's what's new in the agenda packet for today.
Howard.
Just out of curiosity, do they indicate to you verbally or otherwise what would be an acceptable funding level?
Well, let's see.
We're at 82%.
Sure.
If you read through the letter, it says 100% funded.
100%?
It says in the deal.
The last time it was given was 100%.
Close. 97, I believe, according to the letter and the information we received. Currently, it's 81, I believe, on the letter, not that 81 or 82 matters.
Mr. Kaufman, the criteria in order to issue that 13th check is twofold.
One, there has to be money in the account, and two, the employees have to have received a cost of living allowance or payment.
Correct.
Is there money in the account?
Yes, there is. There is currently.
Have the employees received a cost of living?
No, they have not.
So, based on those two criteria, you're saying they don't meet?
Correct.
The 13th check?
Yes.
Okay.
If we were to consider this, and, just consider it, and it did approve a 13th check, that would put it out in a different format than what has already been approved and what we would normally have.
Correct.
And then would set a precedent for future years.
The 13th check was established when Sean was the administrator, you know, and to say that those rules are in stone, that was something that they did at the time. Say that it's not going to be tweaked at a later date. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, that's what I'm like, that was put in place.
It wasn't, and obviously, this is your call, but the, I recommend strongly that if you have a policy that dictates or sets guidelines as to when you do this, that you make sure that the policy, or whatever form it is, says that it is still within the budgetary discretion or discretionary authority of the County Board of Commissioners. The reason I say that is, the city Detroit retirees had a 13th paycheck deal that went on for a lot of years, and then the, they got into financial trouble, and that would be a reason you might want to do it, not want to do it. And the retirees' association filed a charge with the Michigan Employment Relations Commission, and the judge said, "Well, this has gone on long enough that it's a tacit agreement." So, even though you didn't really have an agreement to continue doing it, I'm telling you, you're going to do it. So, all I'm saying is, whichever way you go, I'll make sure you, in the future, whatever guidelines you set, that it still indicates that ultimately, whether it's this board or other people in the future, it's their call.
So, look...
Howard.
So, you're suggesting, Gary, that what we need to do is work with the retiree association and the retirement board and chisel into stone some guidelines regarding this issue so that we don't have this problem in the future, because certainly, you know, they're deserving, all retirees are, of some kind of an increase. It's been tough the last few years. But on the other hand, we have to follow certain policies too, and if the funding isn't sufficient, you know, we don't have the kind of funding in that account that we need, well, then we have justification for saying no at this time.
Yeah, I'm not saying chisel, guidelines in stone. What I'm saying is, set some guidelines, but then also provide in whatever policy memorandum, whatever it is you do, that still ultimately, because the spending authority rests with this board, that ultimately, the decision is for this board to make, period. As it should be with other things you do where you spend money. It's just, what I would hate to see is, we've been very careful to reserve authority, like to retiree healthcare changes in the collective bargaining agreements, and it's your call. And I would hate to see this type of thing, somebody later say, "Well, read that decision from Detroit." Now, you don't have any authority. It's automatic, and maybe it gets to the point where you can't afford to do it anymore, or it's not the prudent decision, but because of some case somewhere, it becomes automatic.
Yeah. Commissioner Riley.
I got really three things that bother me on this, is the two letters, number one, from other agencies, Mental Health and St. Clair County Road Commission requesting we don't do this. And then the other part is the actuaries. The actuaries are hired to tell us what we, what position we're in and what things we should do and not do. And they're recommending, because we haven't built it up, and I have to agree with counsel that the, we don't want to get ourselves into a position where we give out the 13th check, for example, even though I know that down in my heart, I'd like to do that. But the other side is, my concern is that we don't want to get into a position that we're in trouble with the dollars down the road for the other people that do retire. And when I got two agencies that want to raise their hand and say, "Please don't do that. We want to be, work together for a long-term stability." You look at that, and then you hire actuaries to pay attention to them, because they're supposed to be a lot smarter than all of us. And I think that's what they gave the big dollar for. So, I think I'm going to have to go with that idea of those three items on my, on my vote.
Howard.
Would it be appropriate to ask Administrator Kaufman and our counsel to work together on what might be an acceptable policy so that not only, or, you know, going forward, so not only we know what the rules are, but also the retirees know, you know?
Howard, I believe we have rules in place, and that's how, the direction that our administrator gave us, and if you don't have the cost of living, then it doesn't meet the criteria that we already have in place. We have a policy and criteria already in place for this, and that's how we gave up the letter and recommendation to the county.
Probably needs a little more tweaking.
I think, I think, you know, the retirees are here, obviously, with a legitimate concern. And I think if they knew, you know, what the parameters were, you know, that would make it a lot easier for all of us.
Well, if I understand you, you want to potentially change the parameters, but the parameters are there. The criteria that had been met, there would have been a 13th check issued. They would have got a 2% increase. If the employees would have got the increase, and it met the actuary report, they would have gotten a 13th check. Correct? No?
Yes.
Those were not met, so that's why there wasn't a 13th check being recommended by our county administrator. If they would have met, everything that's in place. Now, we can go back and have our counsel and bill work on something, on revising what we currently have in place.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding something here. The 2% would have been a raise in their monthly...
Correct.
Pension check. Not a 13th check.
That's regular employees.
Regular employees have to get a cost of living raise during the year.
For consideration.
Oh.
For 13th check.
Oh.
And that did not happen.
As of today.
It seems to me, when I first joined the board, this was back many years ago, we voted to give retirees like a 2% or 3% increase in their monthly pension check. Am I mistaken on that?
You've been here 12 years.
Yeah, I know. Well, there's been a little bit of water under the bridge since then. Yeah.
That was 1894.
2007, that was the process.
Okay. Okay. And I myself would have, working on revising our policy, maybe the 2% isn't appropriate, but we do have things in place already. We can look at revising a little bit.
I guess what I'm thinking is making a distinction between giving pensioners a 2% increase in their monthly pension check versus a 13th check. I think we're talking about two different things here.
Hey, need further discussion, or do we need a motion on this?
If you don't make a motion, it'll just die for lack of motion.
Do we have any motion?
I'm not a motion, but I would really like to, to get a consensus. Do we, do we want our Administrator Kaufman and our counsel to work on, you know, tweaking this a little bit?
No, I have a question. I guess I'm questioning, Howard, where you're going with this. My understanding is, there's a policy in place right now. They've asked for the 13th check. They haven't met the criteria. And I'm not saying I'm against giving it to them, because I'm a retiree, I would love to have a 13th check myself. So would you. We're in the school retirement program. I've never seen one, I probably never will. That's beside the point, but if you want to give it to them, are you saying that we should go change the policy first, then come back?
No, I'm saying we need to look at the policy and make sure there's clarification when retirees can come to us and say, "Hey," or they may not even need to. When these criterias are met, they know the criteria, we know the criteria. When these criterias are met, we will give them due consideration.
I seriously don't think, and I'm, I'm just saying what I think, I don't think they would have come to us had we not given a $600 bonus, if that's what you want to call it, to all of the active employees. My understanding is, the retirees are calling that $600 bonus a cost of living to them.
Okay.
And if, if they're seeing that as a cost of living, because we gave them that much money, they're using that. In reality, Mr. Kaufman, was that a cost of living, or was that just a one-time bonus?
Yeah, that was just a one-time bonus.
So, it wasn't a cost of living?
It wouldn't have been meant to 2% anyways.
And it was only to county employees, not to road.
County general.
Correct.
Correct.
County general employees, right.
Right.
And I think that would warrant the letters from Mental Health and also the Road Commission.
I guess I was asking if you think we should go back and change the policy and then, because I think you've heard from most everybody up here that they're not inclined to vote against a policy unless you change that policy first.
Mr. Chair, I think you have to pay attention to what the people that you're hired to do the check, how much have you got, what you can do, and that's the actuaries. You've got to pay attention to what they're telling us. They're saying that you're 81, 82, whatever, but you're not 100-plus, and if you're not, they're saying it's not a good idea. That's basically what they're doing. And in doing that...
Yeah, whatever the dollar amount, whether it's $10 or $1,000.
We have to pay attention to what they tell us. Otherwise, down the road, this board might not be involved, but there will be a board involved if we run low on money, and we have put everybody in problems.
I don't... Lawyer talk, I think it'd be called acquiescence, is what they do when you do a past practice and you do it over and over again. That's the same thing as justifying. That's it. Any other discussion on it? Do we have a motion?
We do not.
Okay, with no motion, we'll move on. Moving on to 7C, manning table changes, administer, controller's office.
Your agenda packet this evening is a request to make some changes to the administrator my department's manning table. All of the changes that are being proposed are laid out here. What these changes will enable us to do is ensure that we can effectively and efficiently pursue the board's agenda, as well as the board's program plan for the coming year, as well as long into the future. The changes will enable the department to take less technical or demanding tasks and relegate those to a clerk typist position. Then, the time that that frees up with two individuals in the office will allow them to do the more technical or the more demanding work that's necessary to ensure that the board's legislative agenda is completed. These might include things like program planning and development, monitoring the development of those programs, their budgets and expenditures, policy compliance, and other implementation tasks. I did work with the budget director and deputy administrator, or pardon me, deputy administrator and controller to get an estimate of what the cost will be, and you'll see that on the back, the total cost for all of these changes is just a little over $33,000 for a year. Obviously, we are partially into the year, so the cost would be less for 2014. We do have the funding to support the 2014 budget adjustment that would go along with the manning table change. Certainly, it's too early to know where we might be in 2015. Although 15 appears to be coming together favorably, it again is way too early to know whether or not funding would be available for next year. However, if this reorganization and the planning, or pardon me, the manning table changes work out, and if they are successful, then I'll certainly be lobbying for the appropriate funding to be continued into 2015 to support those changes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this on to the full board.
Any discussion?
Howard. I'd just like to say that, you know, we've put a lot on your platter in the last couple years, and so I'm very supportive of these, if it'll make things a little easier for you and the team.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 7B, copier replacement contract with Kerr Albert.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board.
Have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No. I'm just going to make comments. This was one of the things that, when I first got on the board, and actually Wally Evans, you know, while he was a purchasing agency, purchasing agent in his previous life, we used to have, everybody had their own individual copier contracts, you know, and they were, this guy had one with this guy, this guy, blah, blah, blah. And when we finally unified these copier contracts, it was literally like $11,000 a month savings at the time. Oh, it was massive. And that was kind of the evolution of purchasing, I guess, at the time, so, you know, just a, just a little...
I also remember that not many years ago, from IT, we were changing out computers about every two to three years. And today, when I went in to, in the administrative, or another county commission office, and I went to get on the computer, it went, "I'm dead." So, I think we're going to need a new computer in there.
Just a comment, I'm real pleased to that this, and I realize it was a bid item, but Kerr Albert is a local store in our area, and I'm real pleased to see that somebody local is, is getting the business.
It's been a big plus for the county. Any other discussion?
I just have a quick question, if somebody can answer it. I see Tiffany and Rick are here. $360,000 is the total price of that. Does that include the purchase of the 20, is it 20 copiers? It includes the purchase of 20 copiers? Does that include the service contract and everything through the duration of that time? Is that a total package price?
Yeah, and actually, it's a multi-year. The first 20 are actually going to only cost us about, I don't say only, but about $72,000. And our plan is to only buy 20 this year, try them out, use them, make sure we like them, make sure we're happy with Kerr Albert. them, make sure we're happy with Kerr Albert's response time service, make sure we're happy with the equipment, and then we'll look to replace the next 20, the next 20 after that. So that $360,000 is total for the entire fleet, and yes, I do believe it included the cost per copy. Carrie, do you rem... Yes. It does include that.
So it did include the service contracts and everything?
Yes.
What happens when those copies get old? I own three or four copiers. When they get old, man, they just nickel and dime you to death. It's time.
Well, this is a three-year. They have agreed to this pricing for three years. So we are locked in to the rate that has been agreed upon, which is the .0039, which is lower than what we're currently paying with Conica. And after the three years, then we will reassess. I imagine we will ask them to extend our contract for another year, extend it for another year. We're hoping to get five, five years out of the equipment. The ones we have currently are seven years old, so...
Is that pretty much, sorry, is that pretty much the life of a copier, is about five years?
Yes.
Keep going for 20, but you put a fortune. Is that what you're trying to do, you're trying to get 20 out of yours?
Sometimes when you start with the Cadillac and then make it into a Lincoln.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, do we have any other ways and means matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to information only. You have St. Clair County 2013 economic data. Do I have a motion to file the information only?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Receiving file packet.
Motion.
And support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.